Good morning. Welcome to the Russell County Commission Meeting for Wednesday, May 28, 2025. We're going to call this meeting to order. Start off by an invocation by Reverend Steve Pace with Summerville Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Chambers. If you will, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Lord, Commissioner, staff, and friends, let us pray. Lord, we pause this beautiful day following storms and winds that have blessed us and in some ways challenged us. We pray for your grace to always see the bright light of a new opportunity and a new day, to have the wisdom and discernment to see new needs and to be faithful to accomplishing old tasks. Lord, as we get from day to day and from contact to contact, Lord, give us the grace and the discernment to be wise and careful and attentive to the needs of others, yet always putting forward the good work, the best work, and for the greater good of our entire community. Thank you for these faithful servants. Thank you for their sacrifice in daily lives and long years that supports this community and helps us to be the best that we can be. Lord, may we spend this day being invested in helping each other, do all that we can for your greater good. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Face the flag, salute, pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we have public comments. We do have, one person has signed in for two different issues. So Ms. Sheila Gudrum, yes, ma'am, if you will, please come to the microphone. And then you'll have a few minutes to speak, about three minutes, okay?
Okay. Thank you for having me.
You can pull it down.
There you go.
Okay, thank you for having me. I have two different issues. I'll speak on the least important first. The least important is that our community, which is Bradley Landing Community located in Fort Mitchell, Alabama, was started and approved for development in 2010. And it got really underway in 2011. Anyway, homes have been built, Fort Mitchell have grown up. The community is not an enclosed community, and it has a street that goes behind it for the neighboring communities, which is Griggs Road. And so, and Griggs Road comes behind the community, and then it goes further out and then into a dirt path, and then it goes onto 165. What we are having is, in addition to the unchecked traffic that's on 165, hopefully, the community and the county would do something about the unchecked traffic that goes on on 165, is that we getting speeding that coming into our community. And that speeding that coming into our community is causing problems. We've already had someone actually be airlifted last year. I think it was on the news where the person was speeding so bad, hits mighty mailbox, and they were airlifted. We have all kinds of problems. And so, the parents can't even, you know, be, you know, not have worry that we're not going to have someone that's going to come in there and speed. We also have sea mice now coming in there because they using it as a cut through to get to the back roads. And since this now is an unchecked speed area, sometimes people of, you know, come in and only do 25 miles per hour. But a lot of times, people are coming in and they're picking up the speed. And so, we're hoping, since this is a county road, that you guys can work with us in our limited budget to install some speed humps up there to deter the speeding. Because we can't stop anybody from coming through the community. Because the community, once it gets to the end of the community, it continues to Griggs Road where the neighbors that on Griggs Road use our community to actually get home instead of turning on Griggs Road from the beginning to actually go home. So we hoping that you guys can work with us or put it on your agenda to seek to explore adding some speed humps into our community because we simply can't afford it. We simply can't.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for bringing that. We do have our assistant engineer here today, and we'll have him take a look at this and maybe get back in touch with you if you can make sure he has your information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Pardon me?
You want to speak to your other issue?
Yes, that is the most important issue that we have. As you told, the community was approved and created in 2010. And that means that the plots and everything was approved by the county engineers. I've actually met with the county engineers. I've met with the commissioner for my district. We've actually spent thousands over the years to try to minimize the impact of flooding. Now, that community, in my opinion, I'm not a professional, should have never been approved to have houses on, okay? We got 93 homes, home sites up in there, and we have a natural flowing stream of water. When it rains, wants to continue on the path that nature creates. No thought was put into the overall future. They built a massive detention that is more than sufficient for our community. But the residents were never told that the reason for that detention is because we're taking water uphill from the school and from all the other neighboring communities. And it's not fair for us to maintain everybody's stormwater. We're literally almost bankrupt right about now. And so, and we have people putting their own money in to minimize the flooding in their backyards. Now, we've showed the county engineer, we showed the commissioner, and we showed other people actual flooding in people's yards. The county engineer went on record to say, well, this looks like a detention over here. This is like Mother Nature is trying to create another detention in this person's yard when it rains. And that person had to get flood insurance. So from downhill, from where 26 Griggs and 22 Griggs starts, where the water come in on the back end, it goes all throughout our community before it finally gets to the place it's supposed to go. We have nonstop trickling water when it's dry going into our detention. We've been put over $28,000 into that detention this year. I can't assess these people any more money. I'm the president of the community. I can't assess these people any more money. We still didn't even have enough money to fix the problem throughout our detention. We are asking you guys to help us. I know, I'm not an engineer, but it seemed like a little simple solution right behind 26 and 22 Griggs. I don't know who owns that property. Hopefully, the county owns that property. Maybe you guys could cut those trees down and put in a detention there so that it can stop so much water coming into our own community. And that way, we can spend our own resources into fixing our problem. Because when you guys created, built the new school about two to three years ago, it increased the amount of water that coming in there. You guys need to come there when it rains to see the water. It looks like a river flowing when it rains. And so, we, the problem continues to get worse, and it's just not right for the residents to have to pay higher, higher insurance, incorporate flood insurance, and then have to go out and try to, to do the work in the, in their yards and everything to try to just enjoy their property when the county can actually help with this because the county is the one that approved the community. We don't, we have to spend money to get experts to tell us what we didn't know. And now that we know, it's like, why in the world this community is even here? And so, we ask you to help us a one time to dig a detention behind 26 Griggs and 22 Griggs to stop the water from coming into our own community, to minimize the water from coming into our community. It will help us greatly. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Again, I think you're going to get even better friends with our engineer because that's going to be a project for them to look at too, for you, if you can make a note of that one. You know, I'm not sure about the approval of that subdivision, when that was done, whether that was done by the planning commission with the county or the city because that is right in that fringe area where at one time, they were actually approving subdivisions. But we will definitely look into that. It really falls back on the developer a lot in the land that was developed with that subdivision. But that's why we hire the experts in our engineering department to look into this and can get us back a recommendation or see if there's anything we can do legally. So I know we can't do stuff on private property, but if there's something that's coming off the right of way, there may be something they can work on. So we'll make sure that Mr. Ray's down on the front row. Mr. Martin, he'll get in touch with you and try to follow up on this, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Lee?
Just to correct the record, we didn't build the school.
That's correct. I've actually, we had to say that too. That would be the Board of Education. So we're not trying to push anything off on you, but again, our planning commission is the one that actually approves subdivisions, who are appointed by us. This is right on the area with the school and the area back when this was built. It may have been in the city's planning jurisdiction before they actually pulled back a little bit. And
Probably was.
Yeah, I think it was, but I'm not positive. It seems like I remember that subdivision actually falling under that. But I don't want to, you know, either way, we need to see what we can do now if there's something that we could do as a county to help with what's coming off of the county road. So we'll get our engineer to take a look at that for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming today and voicing your concerns. All right, Commissioner, we're going to move forward into the agenda. Everyone in the audience, if you will, if you will, please silence your phones if you can just to make sure we're not interrupting as we go. Want to thanks everyone, thank everyone for being here today. And those that are actually viewing this on Facebook Live, we have got a lot of viewers that continue to check in every time we have a meeting. So welcome to everyone. We're going to establish a quorum. Ms. Thomas, if you will, please call the roll.
District 3 Costello.
Here.
District 4 Reed.
Here.
District 1 Lee.
Present.
District 2 Chambers.
Here.
District 5 Darty.
Here.
District 7 Screws.
Here.
District 6 Corbett.
Here.
We've established a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. We also have our attorney present, Ms. Hope Hicks. Thank you. Commissioners, we did not have a work session on Monday due to the state holiday. So we have a draft agenda in front of you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda before we get started.
Motion to approve.
I second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Costello, second by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, signify with a C and a.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved, and that was what we will work off of. Commissioners, if you've had time to look at the minutes from May 14, 2025, Commission Meeting, if so, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Screws, second by Commissioner Costello. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, signify with a C and a.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that does pass. Thank you. We have no proclamations today. We'll move right into the discussion items. The first one is one I put on there, soccer field, SEAL Sports Complex. Commissioners, we have received calls, I know I have. We actually had someone show up at the first Community Conversations meeting that we had at Ladona about a possibility of adding a soccer field to the SEAL Sports Complex. As I discussed in the, in the community conversations and also with our administrator and our engineer, there was a drawing that was created back when the SEAL Sports Complex was first put in place. And that drawing showed the current fields that are there along with some additional fields that moved towards, I guess would be the north on that property, the northwest of that property. Included a, I guess it actually said football, football soccer field and other softball fields and some other fields as well. What I would like to do, and I'm putting this under discussion, no action needed today, is ask our engineer to begin looking at the feasibility of adding a soccer field to the left of those fields of the current baseball fields and the playground area that we have, and bring back some type of proposal to us of what that cost would be, the location, a drawing showing that, so that the commission can consider funding that and getting that approved. Seems to be a lot of interest in soccer in the SEAL area. And the comments were, you know, where people are having to drive to Phoenix City, Art Smith Station to play. I do know that the last meeting, Mr. Larry Knox, the Athletic Director for the high school, mentioned that they do let some, some teams play or practice on the football field. But the concern was, is, you know, would there be conflicts in scheduling and things like that? And should we have one in the sports complex? So that's open discussion if anybody else has any discussion on that.
My main concern is, and I don't have any problem with this at all because it was pre-planned. But we do, we own this property, so we can, we can do it. As soon as this happens, it's going to be one, they're going to be wanting one in Ladona. We don't own that property. I don't even know whether there's property there enough for a field. And then they're going to want one at Fort Mitchell. And so.
Well, the good thing is, is we get to decide on that, so.
Well, I know. Sometimes we don't know how to say no.
Well, I know that, what was it, you would know probably better than most. When was the original sports area built?
I can't give you the exact date.
Like 2000?
Talking about SEAL Sports Complex, it was a.
Like in 2000?
It was, no, it was later than that. It was about 2010.
It was before Commissioner.
Well, that was supposed to be an area for the entire county centralized.
Kind of moved from there.
So we just need to keep that in mind going forward.
Need to stick with what we did, yeah.
Well, I think, you know, and I can give you a little history on that. Yeah, the, the sports complex was, I want to say 2010 timeframe. But we stopped with the initial phase. Nothing ever else happened with it. But we still own the land. It is there. It borders the dirt road there. Can't remember the name of that road offhand, but yeah, I should know it.
I should know it too.
When we, when we took over Ladona, Ladona Sports Complex was being managed by a parent organization that was really floundering a little bit. The maintenance and the safety issues were not being addressed. The decision really came down to either pushing to have it closed or for the county to take it over. And I think there's been a lot of interest in that. I think it's really done better since we did take it over as a county. So we do have two complexes, if you will, and I think they get used by different people within the, within the county. We have asked them to kind of merge a little bit, you know, and play in each other and doing things like that with baseball and other things. But, and I think they've been successful in that in some ways. But I do think that we need to explore what we have in SEAL, so that was why I put this on the agenda today.
My main point is, I just don't think we own land anywhere else except SEAL.
I agree. Yeah, and even in Ladona, I don't think there is enough land, even on that lease, to be able to do anything else with another soccer field. I know we have some further back, but it's not very far.
You, you could just use the football field as soccer, but they'd have to schedule different times.
Yeah, it comes back to the conflict, yeah.
And any of y'all, I know they play down there, out in that field across Dick's store there. They have big games down there. What days, I don't know.
Well, they had one this last weekend down there. Somebody had actually rented it, if you will, the field to have a soccer game or something down there. So during the, about the same time, the May Day event was supposed to be going on down there, which I don't think it was very well attended this year, but I think they did have a soccer game down there as well. Very good. All right, so again, just discussion. Ray, if you can kind of help us follow up on that and maybe get something back on a future agenda for us to talk about. Thank you. Putting a lot on Ray today. Next up, under business items, the first one is the budget transfer request. Our tag, Commissioner, Ms. Bowman?
Good morning. I'm asking to transfer $5,000 from line item 541 to line item 214 to buy new chairs for my clerks. They're about 19 years old, and I can't fix them anymore. So I'm asking to transfer that money so I can buy new chairs.
What, what, where you transferring it from?
It's going from equipment furniture to my, from equipment furniture over 5,000 to a, equipment furniture under 5,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Costello.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chambers. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, signify with a C and a.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Thank you.
Next up, Commissioners, is tourism budget purchases. As you'll remember, I actually gave a budget for the tourism for this year. Had a couple of items that I'd like to add to that going into this. We have a very good balance in our tourism budget, as I shared a few meetings ago. The two projects that I would like to add in this fiscal year are projects that I think are going to enhance the county and our tourism and for different events and things that we can have in the future. The first one is the restoration project of the Uchi Methodist Church, which is owned by the county because I threw the Russell County Historic Commission. This was donated, if you'll remember, by a local attorney when he owned the property. This project has been underway for a while. They have raised money, but they are struggling to raise money. They have gotten a lot of the structural work completed in it. Now, this church is, was built in the 1800s. It is on the National Historic Register and is in need of some additional renovations. The goal of this is for the Historical Commission to be able to have events there and bring people into the county for these events, whether it's county functions or weddings or other things. This is an area that is not frequented much. You have to be going there. It's not, it's a destination for sure because it's off the main road. In this project, they, they are now trying to raise money for painting and electrical and some other things that are vital to making this building survive and continue to be a historic location. What I would like to do in this request today in the form of a motion is to approve $25,000 in tourism towards this project so that we can get this renovation project completed and get this, make this jewel be something that the county can continue to be proud of for many years to come.
Second.
Second by my Commissioner Lee. Is there a discussion?
What's your?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Reed?
Do we own that property?
We do. It was donated to the county. Yes, sir. All right, all those in favor, signify with a C and a.
I want to ask a question. We own the property, but we don't own the property around it.
That's correct.
What, I mean, I think we need to pursue a long-term lease or something because there is no restroom facilities there.
Right. I have, I have discussed with the new property owner, the new property owner of the land who bought it from the attorney that donated the church to us, has very interested in doing a use lease for the property around it so that it's maintained and so that if anyone uses it for parking or whatever, that the liability shifted to the county as well. So he's very interested in it and open to the idea. So we just need to start working on that project. And I had this conversation with him two days ago, so. So yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I do definitely think that is something that we can get done.
Do you think we need to get that part straight before we put money into the building?
I would if I felt any, if there was any hesitation from the landowner. I don't think there's any hesitation. And to be clear, we do own the property that the church is on and a little bit around it and the driveway going in. We have that in the deed. We just would like to have additional parking. So it's not really an issue of, you know, would we have access? We still have access. We still have parking around it. We still have area. And there's a possibility to be able, for them to be able in the future to build some restrooms right next to it. It's the additional parking in the front between the church and County Road 22 that is in, in discussion with that landowner.
Well, this is a historical building, and we've let too many historical buildings just, you know, turn so bad that they couldn't be saved. And this building does need saving, and if we can help save it for this small investment, then I'm all in favor of it. It's a pretty building. The case, I mean, it's just an old country church. I used to drive by there, and I used to tell Belle, I said, I sure wish I owned that. I'd like to live there.
Yeah, it's, they did some fundraising, they did a fundraising event two weekends ago, went down there and spoke and was amazed at the work they've been able to get done on it so far. But they are struggling to raise the additional money, and paint is needed pretty bad. So that's why I brought this today, so. All right, all those in favor, signify with a C and a.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that is passed unanimous. The other project that I would like to purchase out of the tourism funds is we want to upgrade our drone that will be able to produce photos and videos for our projects and our different venues in the county. This purchase is just under, I'd like to approve in the form of a motion, $7,000 for the purchase of this drone to be able to do these videos and photos for the county. And will only be operated by drone operators that are licensed, Part 107 FAA. And that's in the form of a motion.
Second the motion.
Second by my Commissioner Darty. Yes, sir, Commissioner Screws. Myself, I'm a Part 107 FAA drone pilot, and I think Mr. Martin is as well with our emergency management. We may have others in the county that I'm not sure of. The only reason I say we should be piling this by drone operators is one, because we want to take care of it. For one, we don't want people to just run it in the trees or flying it in violation of the FAA rules, which are, there are some definitely violations. Yeah, and this, this drone will actually allow us to fly closer to Fort Benning, not on Fort Benning. Some of the drones in the previous one that was purchased by our previous tourism person, this is definitely an upgrade from that one. And that drone, if you got within any kind of proximity to Fort Benning, it wouldn't even take off because of the restrictions with the DOD. So this one will give us a lot more capability. As you know, we have some facilities that are on the edge of Fort Benning, so. All right.
And I think, I think, I just want to make sure that the commission knows that if you're having a, an event in your area and you would like video footage of that or whatever, it's just a matter of requesting.
That's right.
That's, that's what I was trying to help you with that.
I think we need a few more licensed pilots.
Yeah.
I think, I think the assistant engineer would be a good job.
We're just going to keep throwing things at him, aren't we? I will tell you that that was one of the hardest tests I've ever taken in my life, get that license. So volunteer if you want to. Sheriff, you may have. Do you have some? You, I can't remember if you actually sent someone through the drone pilot license now, so. Thank you, dude. Yeah. All right, yeah, gotcha.
And one retired.
And the good thing about it is, is once you get your certification, it is free to continue your certification, and it's online. So it'll be easy to maintain. So if they've let it go, they may look to see if they can re-up it, so for sure. All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify with a C and a.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, the next one is the chief appraiser salary. Commissioners, I have this under Ms. Wright. As we know, she's out sick today, so she's asked me to cover this for it. As you'll remember, at the last meeting, we hired our map and appraiser, and we failed at that point to mention the salary and get it on the record. So we'll need to do that today. The salary that we have approved or would need to approve for our chief map and appraiser was, was actually a salary that was created for the position in consult with Heath, who was our outgoing appraiser, and others at the state level as well. And that salary is $110,000. That is an increase from where Heath Crowe was making. But the increase net to the county is $2,880. So that would be the additional funds out of the county portion. The rest would come out of the state and other partnerships in that reimbursement. It is a convoluted process. Maybe Commissioner Lee can explain it to you, or Chris can, as far as our reimbursements. But I think the thing you need to know today for sure is that the cost to the county in addition to the previous approved salary in the salary schedule is $2,880. So I will make that motion that we approve the salary of the map and appraiser from his current, from his hire date at $110,000.
Second.
Second by my Commissioner Chambers. Any discussion?
Share the salary, right?
Yes, sir. That is correct. That increase is more than that, but the cost to the county is $2,880. All right. All those in favor, signify with a C and a.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass unanimous. Thank you. Next up is County Engineer. First one is a request to get contracted to work on Pittsview Lake. Mr. Martin?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, we're, the Highwayders Department is requesting that we be allowed to start the construction of the Pittsview Lake. The approximate cost is going to be $25,000. But Commissioner Screws, I mean, Commissioner Corbett has secured a grant for $15,000 that will go towards that. So the remaining 25, of the 25, the remaining 10,000 will come out of the Parks and Rec budget for that project.
So today, we need to approve the purchase of the, up to $25,000, and the grant will be a reimbursement, so.
Correct. Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Screws? Motion by Commissioner Screws?
Second to motion.
Second to my Commissioner Darty, any other discussion or comments? I think we're all excited about this and look forward to having it there, so. All right. I can't read that.
He can't read.
Go ahead and speak, Commissioner Costello.
I think that, uh, as a commission, we need to, uh, think of something that, uh, a name that we can name this lake, uh, rather than Pittsview Lake. Uh, so.
It can be Pittsview Lake for a while.
It, it can be Pittsview Hole in the Ground right now until we get water in.
Well, they have named the facility.
We get rain like we've been getting, it won't take long.
So I think we do need as a commission to come up with something, uh, uh, really nice.
Let Commissioner Screws work on that. I think, you know, he, they have named the facility down there. What, what's the name of the facility, Commissioner?
It's Pittsview School Park and, uh, Healing Zone.
Healing Zone, yeah, I saw that on that site, yeah.
That's just snappy. It rolls right off the tongue.
I, I will say that, you know, this lake, especially after walking down there, the idea to have a lake on that property that people can come and heal, if you want to, or just peacefully have a good time with their families and, and fish and, and something we don't have in the county, that's, it's really exciting to me, so.
I agree.
Let me add to that. E and I initially started this, which was dealing with the healing zone. That's why we added the healing zone into the, into the name. And they contributed about fifty thousand dollars into the overall park.
E and I?
E and I. E and I. Am I right? It is E, E and I.
E and I, Equitable Neighborhoods Initiative, and the amount was over sixty thousand.
Okay, I'm sorry, sixty thousand.
What, what size lake are we talking about?
Do you know that range?
Not off the top of my head. We're still kind of looking at the general area. A lot of it's gonna depend on the amount of, uh, material that has to be moved and the amount of water we need to hold.
And y'all, y'all were able to utilize the same contractor that cleared the land to build the lake, cause he's a lake builder, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And the first step will be to, uh, you know, we gotta drain everything to it and once we get it drained, then we can start determining a little bit more of that, but we gotta get, make sure it's big enough to take the flow of all the water that's gonna be through there.
Very good, cause it was pretty wet that day. Definitely like a lakesite, for sure.
Yeah, I would like to make sure everyone knows that we're not just building a lake to build a lake. It's also, it is solving the issue with the wet marshy area.
Right, yes.
That, um, that's gonna make that park so much better in the long run, so.
And it would've cost more to, to do the drainage.
Right.
Yes.
And, and I will say too, probably wouldn't have got the grant to do the drainage too. Um, and as soon as we get the grant, official documents, everything, I'll bring that to the commission. I have done the, uh, letter of request, as was requested of me, so we should have that pretty soon. So that's a good piece. And I, I told Commissioner Screws when we were talking before, I was, we were gonna support this project and that was one of the first ways that I found to do that. So we're gonna come, continue to support it, so.
And we'll keep y'all posted with updates of how it's going.
All right, uh, we have a motion in a second, um, to approve the twenty-five thousand dollar purchase to start construction of the lake. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought we did. All right, all in favor signify with CNI. All opposed? All right, that is approved. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to, uh, Highway Department to begin pickleball court project.
Yes, uh, what we're asking today is basically to allow the Highway Department to become the prime contractor for the pickleball courts and basically us sub out any work that needs to be done. Um, we'll do the grading, but some of the concrete work and, and fencing and stuff like that will need to sub out and some of it may have to be bid, but that's what we're asking.
Motion by Commissioner Screws?
Second to motion.
Second to my Commissioner Darty, y'all are getting it quick this morning.
What about the location?
Yeah, so the location, Ray, if you'll mention that again.
Yes, the, the locations will be, uh, there'll be, uh, two courts placed in Ladonia and four courts placed in Seal. The covers have already been bid and everything like that. We just have to get the, the courts constructed.
Okay. I think the biggest problem we're gonna have is how you're gonna add additional courts in the future, cause I think it's gonna be a, a hit. Cause I'm telling you, we're hitting, they're hitting all over Facebook right now about pickleball courts still, so I'm excited about getting this done, so.
And when the original facility in Seal was designed, never heard of pickleball before, so there wasn't any space on that.
I think they actually had a spot for a tennis court, I think, on that original drawing, so this will be a good addition.
That pickleball, something came on real fast.
It did. All right, uh, you have the request by the engineers or a motion?
We did. We did a motion.
Did you? I, you need to start writing this down on a, all those in favor signify with CNI. All opposed? That is approved, thank you. Next is request to advertise and solicit annual bids.
Yes, we're asking to send out our annual bids for, uh, advertisement and the bids will be, uh, uh, striping and markings, liquid asphalt, our public works, uh, asphalt bid, our grassing bid, our pipe bid, our aggregate bid, um, our motor grader blades and fencing. And what we're asking is to advertise on May the twenty-ninth, June fifth, June twelfth. We'll open bids on June eighteenth at two-thirty in the commission chambers and then we would ask to award the bids at the following commission meeting on June the twenty-sixth.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Costello, second to my Commissioner Darty, any discussion? All those in favor signify with CNI. All opposed?
Excuse me, it was the June twenty-fifth meeting, not the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, twenty-fifth, thank you. All right, uh, next up is request for budget transfer.
Yes, uh, we're asking to decrease line item two twelve fuel and lubricants by eight thousand dollars and increase line item two eleven office supplies by four thousand and increase, uh, line item two twenty-three copy rental by four thousand. And the reason we need to do this is we, like Ms. Carey said, we have to get some new chairs for the office and then our plotter went out this year and we had to get a new plotter, so we just gotta make adjustment to, to get that taken care of.
All right. You have the request of the engineer. Motion by Commissioner Screws?
Second.
Second to my Commissioner Chambers, any discussion or comments? All those in favor signify with CNI. All opposed? All right, thank you, Ray.
Thank y'all.
Uh, we have nothing under sanitation, Randy? All right, thank you, sir. Um, Ms. Thomas, do we have anything in the administrator portion today? All right, thank you. Um, nothing under coronavirus. Madam Attorney, do you have anything for us today?
Been mighty quiet.
Yes, she has. Very attentive. We, we, we try to check all that before she gets here, so I promise you. Um, under Commissioners' discussion, do you have anything, Commissioners?
Uh, the only thing I would like to discuss or, or say is, um, when it comes to historical buildings like we voted on earlier, that's one thing that, um, you know, I've had the privilege of, of visiting some countries that have buildings that are older than this country. And, um, that's one thing we don't do well as a society here in, in America is save some of these historical buildings. And I, I'd like to just say I, I appreciate what we're doing, uh, when it comes to some of these historical sites. Um, when you go in and you look at a, uh, a building that's over two thousand years old and, uh, then you come here in America and it's rare to see anything that's over a hundred and fifty years old, so, uh, I, I really do appreciate the fact that we're trying to do what we can, as small as it is, uh, with a, with a building like that, but I appreciate the commission doing that.
I, I concur with that and I will say that, that the reason I got involved in this, uh, this Methodist church was because of the work that we did on the, the Masonic Lodge in Crawford. So I, I loved, you know, I was not a history person in school. I kinda wish I would've been, paid more, more attention, but, um, since I've gotten a little bit older, this has really meant, meant a lot to me in seeing these projects. So I agree, if anything, anytime we can save one of these historic facilities or buildings or, or history, we need to be doing that.
And we lost two buildings in Seal that would've probably made Seal the number one tourist spot in this area, and that was the old jail and the depot.
And the bank building too. I hated to see it come down.
The bank building never was owned by the county. Well, the depot wasn't either, but we could've owned it. But, uh, I've had, I had the privilege to see both of them.
Well, I've got a picture of them. Um, found a picture of the old jail, so, um, and the bank building was for sale for a while and then, then somebody bought it and tore it down brick by brick and it was terrible. But, yeah, definitely think there's some other projects. And I wanted to mention too, um, I'm glad you mentioned that, Commissioner Costello, but, um, I've seen a, another, our mural artist that did the mural in Crawford on the side of the, uh, Crawford Fire Department just did one, I think it was Byron, Georgia. Man, it's unbelievable to see the work he does. I really would like to find some other places in this county, some, uh, facing walls that has a lot of, uh, traffic that people could see to promote our county, their tourism funds. Um, we, we need to continue to find quality projects under tourism to be able to promote our county. And if we can find some, if you've got some in your district, I've seen a couple in Hatch of Chubby that I'd love to, you know, have interest in, but, um, if we can find some, especially on heavily traveled roads, I think it's something we need to continue to promote, so please get with me.
Need to look at the Fort Mitchell area, cause that's the most traveled road in the state, I think.
We actually had a couple of, uh, citizens in Fort Mitchell reach out a year or so ago and they were gonna start, try to help identify a location and I, you know, I'm sure they're probably still looking, but it's definitely something that we would like to, yes, ma'am.
Um, there's a location, um, right along Griggs Road. I'm not sure who owns it, but based on it, um, it's up next to one, Highway one sixty-five. It would be very ideal.
Griggs Road, the second portion of Griggs Road, the southern road?
Second portion of Griggs Road.
I'm familiar with it. I think that was the old florist or something.
If you guys could take it and, and make sure that we can speak up to them.
I got you.
It would be great.
All right, thank you so much.
The whole area, as, as you continue to go further back.
Yeah.
It, it goes and it, it starts paying and then it goes into a dirt road. It, it's a, it's an ideal location to put something substantial there.
All right, so for our folks that are tuning in, we, we can't talk from the audience cause people can't hear that are on, that's okay. You're fine, I got it, I'll cover it. But, um, she was saying that, uh, a location near Griggs Road, the southern portion of Griggs Road on one sixty-five may be a possible, so we'll take a look at that. Thank you so much for bringing that to us. Thank you.
You know, all the, all the paratroopers that train, they, they jump in Fort Mitchell.
Oh, believe me, I used to pull over my patrol vehicle and watch them jump out of the planes. It was, of course, it was cotton fields out there and not houses like it is now, so for sure. All right.
I could see a mural there.
That would be great.
Incorporating the paratroopers plus the fort and plus the trading post. I mean, there's a lot of stuff used to be in Fort Mitchell.
And I don't know if you've been down that way in a while. I know Commissioner Darty has, cause you have this conversation, but we now have a, one of the billboards there, it was a brand new billboard put up near the drop zone that actually promotes Russell County there. Uh, we have, we've rented it for a few months now, so, um, we definitely wanna do what we can in that area, but, you know, biggest thing is that we can find a wall to put it on and, and, and get permission to do it. We would love to use some tourism funds to do that, so. All right? Cause we, I think we've done five total now.
Hey, we can build that new building we're proposing down there and then we'll have a wall.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Let's get to work on it. All right, any other, any other items under Commissioners' discussion?
I have one.
Yeah, Commissioner Screws?
Would like to thank the Commissioners and, uh, especially Commissioner Corbett for his help with that, uh, the, the project on the, uh, pond, not pond, the lake.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, wanna thank Leroy and Engineering for what they have done. And, uh, it's coming together.
And maintenance too.
And ma, oh, yeah.
Your bathroom.
Yeah. And, uh, but we, I just wanna thank everybody involved. The project is coming together and, and we're looking forward to the facility being used a lot and, uh, we're gonna invite y'all down once it's up and running. We are planning an open house to, uh, to a grand opening for the facility as soon as we can get everything done.
I'm coming fishing. I'm just letting you know, I'm coming fishing, so it's fine.
Hey, I imagine you'll have to restock that lake every year.
I think, we were talking about that upstairs earlier. I think it's gonna be very popular, for sure. Yep.
They, they are.
Definitely, all right.
But thank you.
Yes, sir. Very happy to help. All right, uh, we'll move into announcements. Um, the first one, Commissioner Darty is actively involved in the Fort Mitchell Auto Zone ribbon cutting, Thursday, May twenty-ninth. Anything to say on that one, Commissioner?
Yeah, um, I'm, good mo, good morning, everybody. I'm so excited for the Auto Zone that coming into that area. It's gonna be a great business opportunity for that area. Um, the ribbon cutting gonna start at ten a.m. After the ribbon cutting, the store will be open for business. I'm telling you, I mean, it's a great store down there. I've been working hands-on with the superintendent and I think it's a very great opportunity for the Fort Mitchell area.
Very good. I know you'll do well with that ribbon cutting. We're excited to have it. Um, next up, we have two for Saturday. Um, they're gonna conflict with each other a little bit, so try to make both of them if you can. The first one is the Memorial Day Ceremony at the Veterans Memorial there in Seal at the Sports Complex, um, ne- next to Silver Run Baptist Church. That one is on Saturday, this Saturday, May thirty-first at eleven a.m. They have a pretty good agenda there where they're gonna, you know, honor our, our, um, fallen veterans and, and make sure that we do a good service for the county. The next one is the Spring Truck Tacular, which is, uh, sponsored by our Chamber of Commerce. Uh, they had this scheduled a couple of weeks ago, rained out, so it's Saturday, which is this Saturday, May thirty-first, um, from ten-thirty to three p.m. And that is right at the base of Thirteenth Street Bridge at the Whitewater Avenue area, um, where they have the Bark of the Park, I think it is, um, that area. And it, it's actually extends over into the little shopping center parking lot. So again, that's this Saturday at ten-thirty. County Building Holiday, uh, we have Jefferson Davis Memorial, or Jefferson Davis Birthday, Monday, June second. The county buildings will be closed. We'll make sure we get our signs out for that. Crawford Market Days, again, uh, we got, we got halfway through it and we got rained out a little bit this last one, but this next one is Saturday, June twenty-first and it continues the third Saturday of each month through November, and that's from eight a.m. to two p.m. Eastern Time. Hope everyone comes out for that as well. The next, we have the Community Conversations. Our next Community Conversations will be at the Seal Courthouse, um, the old Russell County Courthouse, on Thursday, July tenth, from five-thirty p.m. to seven-thirty p.m. Eastern Time. We hope to have a good crowd there and be able to listen to our citizens and kinda share what we're doing. And then following that one, um, on July thirty-first, will be at Fort Mitchell Senior Center, same time, five-thirty p.m. to seven-thirty p.m. Eastern Time. Any other announcements that we missed?
I'd like to, uh, just make sure that, give, uh, the public plenty of notice that on June the eighteenth at four-thirty, we're gonna have a, um, uh, safety fire training. At four-thirty, the courthouse is gonna close here and, uh, we're gonna be training our employees. Uh, David, is it risk management this?
Yeah. So. It's a, uh, it's actually a fire drill for the courthouse. Uh, we're actually going to practice our emergency operations plan for the building here.
Okay.
And that is June eighteenth?
June eighteenth at four-thirty.
Four-thirty p.m.
Do you plan to have them every month or just one time a year?
We're gonna have a fire drill, uh, in June and I think in September possibly, we're gonna have a shelter in place drill.
We were required to do it every month.
Right.
Yeah, that was a, uh, state law for high, education facilities to do it once a month, but that does not cover county buildings. Um, there's no requirement for county buildings, but it's just a smart thing to do, for sure.
Just need to.
There are signs posted as well.
Need to mention that the, uh, Exchange Club Car Show has been moved to the seventh.
June seventh.
At the Crawford Park, so please show up if you want, if you like old cars.
Yeah, definitely, that should be a good.
Old cars, new cars, race cars.
That should be a really good thing.
And if you got one, please bring it. We need cars.
And, and you can bring it and register on-site. I'd get all, uh, you know, this is an exchange club event that's being held at the Crawford Walk-In Trail, but I get like three messages a week asking about, can I get my car entered? So I give them the number that's posted on the flyer, but they can also show up that morning and register their vehicle, so we hope we have a good crowd there.
Well, we voted at Exchange Club to give you a number there, bud.
I, I figured something, something happened, cause I, I am getting a lot of texts too, so maybe you actually did, so. All right, uh, we're excited to have them out there. Any other, any other items we missed? I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, is there a second? Second to my Commissioner Darty. All in favor signify with CNI.
Aha.
All right, we are adjourned.